Check one, two. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum, presented by the Herman Town Area Chamber of Commerce and the Herman Town Star. As those of you are taking a seat, there are programs that are out on a table in the front entrance to the theater this evening. You're welcome to grab one of those. There's also a pen that you can jot some notes down as well. We have a tight program tonight. It is one hour from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and we have five candidates. We have questions that we asked for community input and staff input, and also just our input as professionals. And both Jake and myself are current elected officials in the Proctor area. We'll share more about that in just a moment. So we've collaborated to put together a bunch of questions for this evening. We did pass those out to the candidates just a few moments before the start to put them at ease and give them an opportunity to kind of start to frame their questions. The evening is timed. We do have a timekeeper this evening. His name is Wolfgar from the Toastmasters Club here in, it actually meets in Herman Town, and we'll share just a little bit more about that. But first, I would like to introduce Jake Benson from the Herman Town Star to share a little bit more about how he came to be here this evening.
Well, thank you all very much. I learned at an early age that government was important on almost every level, which is why I ran and was elected as a vice president during my junior and senior year. Got involved with the Proctor City Council as mayor. I'm serving now as a city council. Proud to say that this evening I am not on a ballot anywhere, and my father told me to never miss an opportunity to keep my mouth shut, so I'm handing it back over to Kim.
Thank you, Jake. And I'm Kim Parmeeter, the President and CEO of the Herman Town Area Chamber of Commerce, an organization of about 343 members as of yesterday. It's been a wonderful opportunity to see that grow over the last six years that I've been involved with the organization. I myself am a school board candidate, soon to be retiring after a four-year term for Proctor Public Schools, and it has been an honor to serve and a challenge and a welcome one. And yes, I really appreciate the candidates that have put themselves forward this evening for, or this season for, to be considered for your school board. So we will also, at this point, I will turn the mic over to Wolfgar, who is our timekeeper for Toastmasters. Wolfgar, would you share just a little bit about the Toastmasters organization in Herman Town?
Thank you, Kim. My name is Wolfgar. I'm a former president of the Duluth Club of Toastmasters. Toastmasters is an international organization that promotes speaking skills. Getting up in front of a whole auditorium full of people can sometimes be a very scary thought, and so we teach the skills that allow you to do things like this, that allow you to do times, that allow you to do informational panels of this nature. And if you have any questions regarding Toastmasters, we are a fun group of people. Please ask me, ask Kim. She's been one of our longstanding members. And then also, I believe we have flyers at the back. All right. Excellent. I'm going to hand it back to Kim. Thank you, everybody.
Wonderful. Thank you, Wolfgar. Thank you for volunteering your time this evening. We will have a handful of questions. Most of them will be 60 seconds in length, at which point Wolfgar will hold up a yellow card at 30 seconds, which is a Toastmaster practice, to indicate to our candidates that your time is halfway through, and then a red card at 60 seconds as well, to indicate that we are concluding. At this time, I'd like you to please welcome our candidates. I'm going to call them all in name, alphabetical order down the row, and then we will kick off with our introductions in just a moment after we introduce all the candidates. The candidates, I'd ask you to please rise as your name is called. Eric Griffith. David Lockey. Ashley McFarland. Jody McShane. And Russ Salji. Wonderful. Thank you. A little bit about this evening and our decorum. The forum will be using the Speak Your Peace Civility Project tools of Civility. This is a local organization that has put this together. It's a community-based campaign to urge our citizens to communicate in a more respectful way. The notes are included in the program, if you picked that up this evening, but we will be using these nine tools this evening. This extends not only to our candidates, but to our audience as well. Today, I will pay attention, listen, be inclusive, not gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, and take responsibility. If you'd like more information about the Speak Your Peace Civility Project, you can find that out at dsa speak your peace.org. Thank you very much. Mr. Benson, we are ahead of schedule. Wonderful. At this time, I will be passing the mic to our candidates, and Wolfgar, the timing will begin with this. We'd like to get to know you a little better, so as you introduce yourself, please consider sharing what qualifications you have for the Office of School Board and what your own experience is with public education. And we'll begin with Mr. Griffith.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. My name is Eric Griffith. I am a graduate of Herman Town High School a long time ago. I also have two beautiful children in Herman Town schools at this time, in sixth and eighth grade. I've also had the opportunity to volunteer in the schools, mostly in the elementary school, but I've also had the opportunity to coach many of the students attending Herman Town. I feel like when it comes to what qualifies me, my role as a nurse practitioner is primarily finding problems, right? It's diagnosing, assessing, coming up with what variables are contributing to the problem, and then working with a team to come up to a solution or come up with a solution. We then implement that solution, and we assess for an outcome. Was it what we wanted? If it wasn't what we were looking for, what we wanted, we then have to go back and reassess. Why didn't the solution work? I believe this is truly what we're looking at with the school board, is what problems or what issues do we have in the future?
Okay. Thank you very much, Eric. David Lockey, your turn. Again, a little bit more about us. Introduce yourself. Consider sharing your qualifications. You can begin now.
Hi, I'm David Lockey. I was born and raised in Duluth. My father lived in Herman Town, spent weekends with him, learned to ride bikes up here, learned to do everything up here as a young man. Worked for Town Square Media in Duluth right now, and I have two kids in the high school program right now and are doing fantastic. And what qualifies me, I believe, is in my position in management, since I've been in for the last 30 years, I've always worked with a team, worked within a budget process, worked within a problem-solving aspect, and also working with kids throughout the years. I spent many summers coaching Little League. I was also a youth rec leader for some low-income children in Lincoln Park in Duluth for many summers as a part of my upbringing. So I've always been around youth, helping kids with the Duluth Playhouse as well and playing sports. So I've had a lot of experience with many aspects of working with children, from sports to academics to extracurricular activities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ashley McFarland, would you share as well?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Ashley McFarland. I am the mother to Leah and Tyler in the district, and I've had the good fortune of serving on your school board for the last four years. I definitely think that makes me qualified for another four, hopefully. But in addition to that, I actually spent about 15 years working for various universities across the country, taking research that was happening there and bringing it to the community. So I'm very passionate about education at all levels. And then in addition to that, I've, the last five years, served as a nonprofit executive, and that has allowed me to really understand board governance, because every day I actually report to a board, and I understand very intimately what that relation should look like. And I'm really excited to extend that knowledge and continue to serve this community.
Okay. Thank you. Jody McShane?
Hi, I'm Jody McShane. I've been a Friedenberg resident for 15 years. I grew up in a suburb of the Twin Cities, but was a, attended public school my entire life. I've got an older stepson that graduated in '96, and I have two kids, one that is a 16-year-old, she's a junior in high school, and our son is in eighth grade. What qualifies me for running for school board is I'm currently a project manager at United Healthcare. I work implementing Medicaid, Medicare exchange businesses, and my project management experience working with state and federal regulations and those long, lengthy, complicated projects, I believe, will apply to the Herman Town School District and some of the problems that the school board needs to address in the coming four years.
Okay. Thank you. And Russ Salji?
Thank you. Again, my name is Russ Salji. I have been in the after-school and summer programming business for 27 years, tied right to the school. If you think the YMCA Essential Wellness Center down the street is Coke, if you think of Boys and Girls Club as Pepsi, where I work, the Valley U Center, we're Shasta. Same stuff, just a different label. We do all the mentoring, we do all the tutoring. We're within the school to help the schools become, so our kids can succeed. If you don't recognize my first name or the last name, my wife was in childcare here for the last 12 years at Hallelujah Childcare, and then she also started the Essential Wellness Center daycare center for the first few years, and then we had three daughters graduate last year, and I currently have a fourth grader. I have spent many hours in boardrooms on both sides of the aisles, Chamber of Commerce to United Ways, Westluth Business Club, the Valley U Center, so I understand the construct of the boardroom, and I certainly want to take the next step into the school boardroom and do what I do inside those realms. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, everybody take a deep sigh, or deep breath. You made it through the introduction, sorry. And that's a good style of how this will go this evening. Wolfgar, I will make sure to give you a little bit more time between each candidate's to set the time. Very important detail to make sure that he is running that clock smoothly as well. With that said, we're going to begin tonight. Again, we have five questions curated from the many, many questions that were submitted through an online forum. So there's five questions with 27 parts each. Just kidding. Just checking to see if you're paying attention. But at this time, I'm going to turn the question over to Mr. Jake Benson, the Herman Town Star, to begin our first question for this evening.
Thank you, Kim. Now that we broke the ice, the question I would like to ask is, what do you see as the school board's role and responsibilities? If elected, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school district? What does this mean to you in terms of presence and visibility around the district? And we'd like to start with David Lockey.
Well, I think the role of the school board, the reason why we have these rules when we get together and we all have to listen, we all have to pay attention, is because the discourse and the climate politically and everywhere is, can be dysfunctional. I think the school board needs to represent the polar opposite of that. These are all at-large positions for a reason. We have to be willing and able and want to, have the desire to, which I know I do, to listen to everyone within a community and work with problems at a given moment in time for that community with an eye on the now, but also an eye on the future as well, because the decisions we make over the next four years impact the future as well. So not only do we have to solicit the opinions of everyone, we have to be willing to listen and hear the opinions of everyone and work together to come up with the best solution at that time for Herman Town as a community and a school district, to keep Herman Town schools as the gold standard, not just for northern Minnesota, but for all of the state.
Thank you. Ashley McFarland?
Yes. This is an excellent question, because it's probably one of the biggest lessons I've learned over the last four years as being one of your school board members, is that all the power you think you might have coming to a school board, you get a pretty big wake-up call when you actually are on the board, because you realize that there's a thing such as governance and policies and procedures and ways that school boards need to act, and how they act, and how they should function. There's great trainings through our state that really teaches us all of this. And so I will just say that I really have learned that, yes, we represent the community and need to do so. We need to make sure that our community is reflected in our school district, but we also need to realize that a lot of work that gets done in the boardroom is not about passion, it's about getting the business done, making sure the budgets are met, and making sure that we have the right staff in the right positions. And so it's just been a big kind of aha moment for me over the last four years about what being a school board member really means, and I'm excited to take that knowledge now and take that to the next term.
Thank you. Jody McShane?
I think that if elected, those board members represent both the community and the school district. I think that means that in terms of presence and visibility, we need to remember that we are an extension of the district, an extension of the community, and act accordingly. I think we need to take, for roles and responsibilities, we need to understand that we are a voice for the people, for the students, for the staff, for the teachers, for everybody that resides in the community and works in the district regardless of their role, and be representative and listen to all of the voices that are coming to us as a part of this
Thank you. Russ Salji?
Yeah, I think the boardroom is a place for a lot of collaboration, a lot of conversation, disagreements. I think they all happen within that construct, but when you all agree on the decision moving out the door, everybody has to have onus of that decision, even if it didn't come from the person that started the conversation. You have to check egos at the door. This is about putting on the best product for our students, faculty, and families. I think it is both representation of the community and the school, which the standard is high, and we want to maintain that high level. I think also being visible. I do know that within some rules of how many people can be in a certain room should be elected, but I do believe there ought to be some connectivity between residents and school board members to share thoughts and ideas, and just the option to be heard, knowing that we can go forth with your message, but not necessarily come down and make resolution on your message.
Thank you. And our last questioner from this round is Eric Griffith.
Thanks, guys. I think absolutely we are both representing the community at large as well as the district. I know when we are going to have to work with an issue, it is going to have to be just for both the school district as well as the community around us. The other issue is, or I think the two biggest issues we're going to have to work with now are going to be facilities, which is something that is a major responsibility of the school board. And as we look at class sizes growing, and as we look at the school essentially shrinking, this is a decision we're going to have to make, and we're going to have to do that within the confines of a budget. And as we know, our budget is unfortunately going to be in the negative the next three years. So some difficult decisions are going to have to be made, but again, I think that is going to require communication with the community as well as with those in the schools to come to a good solution or resolution for both. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. And everyone gets a gold star because you figured out how to pass the microphone down to the next person. So that's what I was looking for at the beginning of our first question, but it's making its way to the appropriate lead. Everybody will have the opportunity to lead a question once. All right. Our next question is from multiple submissions to our online form. It's really been extrapolated from questions we've received about academics and athletics and the arts and other extracurricular activities. So I'm going to set it up like this, with something that I've learned as being a part of the school board and also the athletics committee, Athletics and Activities Committee. If a school district offers too many sports, you risk diluting the size of teams. At the same time, if you offer too few, you risk losing students to other districts. The same can be said about other activities, et cetera. All activities have costs associated, from transportation to uniforms, equipment, technology, registration fees, and staffing. What is your current stance on the levels of academic offerings, athletics, arts, and other extracurricular activities at Herman Town Community Schools? If you would like to add, reduce, or maintain offerings in these areas, please explain. This will be a 60-second question, and we will begin with Ashley McFarland.
So for the last four years, I've actually served on the committee, helping our activities director decide what decisions we need to make for both athletics and our activities, whether it be fine arts or whatnot. And I actually feel that we are very healthy in the district right now in both of those areas. I do believe, however, we are lacking in our offering within academic, and I think specifically some of the career technical education offerings that we could and should be offering here at Herman Town. And one of the best ways to explore that is financially, I know that we have some tough decisions ahead in the district, but there's actually extensive funding available to really enrich classrooms with those more career technical education-focused offerings, and I think that's where we need to really be pointing to. And I think if we offered more of those options, we might be able to retain more students, which will also help us financially, especially at the high school, as we lose a lot of students and funding to PSEO.
Thank you. And Jody McShane, same question.
I have kids that are both in the arts program. My daughter does theater. My son is in athletics. He does multiple different sports. I feel that the current offerings of extracurricular activities are, I think it's probably at a good level. I don't have the insight to what, you know, what it is from the board's perspective. I know that there are opportunities, you know, for certain other activities as well, you know, debate, lacrosse, things like that possibly, but I do feel like there are other offerings. There's speech, there's, you know, the different teams, the community teams that the kids can participate in as well. I do feel like the activities levels to maintain may be appropriate. My stance on that may change, given some additional insight, but I feel like they're satisfactory currently.
Okay. Thank you. Russ Salji?
Well, as you heard earlier, I'm in the recreation business, after-school and summer activities. Recreation is the key to positive mental health. When we start to prune recreation for other things, even academics, our kids suffer. When you think about our experiences in school, it wasn't, I was sitting in history class in second hour and seventh, the seventh answer on the test was hard or easy. I remember prom. I remember homecoming. The things that get our kids in the door are evolved around recreation. If you prune recreation, it doesn't instantaneously happen, but over time, if you keep pruning that tree, you will see more mental health, less school engagement, and the high-quality standard that we have here in Herman Town will suffer. I would be a voice of that room, trying to keep recreation as much as we can within our schools.
Okay. Thank you. And Eric Griffith? Same question.
Thank you. I am a huge fan or proponent of children having experiences, and that means experience in the arts, it means experience in clubs, it means experience in athletics. I love the fact that we have so many opportunities for our students in Herman Town now, and I'd like to see that persist in the future. Experience is part of education. It's part of our growth, and we need to continue that. One of the things I love, which Ash and I spearheaded, is the CTE program, which we're changing in academics right now as we attempt to take on our issues with PSEO. That is a change so that kids have a different, or maybe a different option in academics. One other change in academics, look, this is looking through rose-clovered glasses, but if we could get Spanish or perhaps foreign language in our younger kids where their brains are really willing and ready to seep up new information, I would love it. But again, all of this has to be done within a budget. Thank you.
And David Lockey?
Well, I agree. I'm a huge proponent of extracurricular activities, whether it be sports, whether it be music, whether it be theater. I have the advantage of doing all those things and encourage my kids as well. I tell them, you're going to get as much out of your high school and school experiences you put into it. Get involved, do things. And we have to make sure those programs remain for them to do things. And we have to encourage more kids to participate in the programs we have, because we do have a lot of options. But I see some very talented theater students go to the Duluth Playhouse and are at the North Shore, which is awesome for them, but they have a lot of talent we could have on this stage right here, and I'd like to see more of that. And I also agree, the key is through academia, get more academic programs through the PSEO issue. If we can keep more students here doing those things, then Herman Town schools do not lose the money when they go elsewhere to get credits they think might go toward college, maybe don't go toward college. Those are a lot of things we have to iron out, and we have to take full advantage of the funding available to keep those things here, and by doing that, we'll be able to not only save money, but make money for other things by enriching the current programs we have at Herman Town.
Thank you. Great answers. Next question, what do you know about the district's current financial position, and if elected, what steps would you take to maintain or improve that position? And please elaborate. And we will start with Ashley McFar, oh, I'm sorry, Jody McShane. Sorry.
I know that the district is operating in a deficit, and the projections for the next, I believe, three years that we are presented with is that that deficit is only set to expand. And so I think we're going to have to take, do some analysis of, you know, where there are opportunities, where we, I know that there's, you know, opportunities potentially in the high school to discuss different, you know, people have talked about PSEO, that's certainly, you know, something we should explore. I believe there are other, you know, I don't know if the supplies and materials, the purchase services, if there's any wiggle room in any of those slices of that pie chart where some of those can be reduced. I believe that we need to make our staff and the benefits a priority in maintaining those slices of the pie so that we can retain quality people and staff for the students and the people of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think if you've read any of my pieces in any of the submissions that we've made, I've kind of went out there and said, it would be nice to see if there's some accountability for those higher education places that are taking some of the money that are following our students, and if the student isn't getting what they are being paid for, there should be reimbursements back to the school. Now, I don't know if this is a state issue. It's just one thing that popped around in my head after thinking about, how can we add income without subtracting services? So the model of that thought process is also at play here when you would vote me to the school board. It's not always, let's run to a referendum, let's run to cut things. Let's figure out, can we put higher education on the witness stand and get the state behind us to change and start seeing some new revenue streams come our way? I think that's where I would be going with this.
Yeah, I think we're all aware that Herman Town is projected to run a deficit, in fact, a growing deficit over the next three years. I think twofold we need to address this. I think one is looking at current spending and where we can potentially make some cuts that, again, do not negatively impact teachers nor impact the students, the second of which is the PSEO, where we are losing so many students to outside programs. And this is an issue, again, where I think as we come up with new ideas to address this, encourage kids to stay in school, entice kids to stay in school. What can we offer that is different, that we have not offered before, to make them want to stay at Herman Town? This can be things like the CTE program, this can be things like college in the schools or a hybrid program. And again, we can brainstorm, come up with ideas, implement ideas, and then come back and look, did this work? And if it didn't work, that's okay. Let's pivot. Let's try something else. But again, how do we keep kids in the schools from the PSEO program, and where can we make cuts?
Well, I agree. Obviously, it's no secret that our budget is trending in the wrong direction over the next three years, and you do your household budget, the old 50-30-20 rule. We have to go for ultimate needs versus ultimate wants, and the lion's share has to go to that, and fine-tooth comb where our spending is currently, are there places we can save before we start thinking cuts? And we have to protect our staff. A Walden University study showed a 10% cut in a budget has the result of teachers' budgets has the result on test scores as hiring the lower 10% of all applicants. And everything we do has a direct implication and a direct impact on our students, so we have to make sure that we are looking at our current spending, looking at being able to offer students programs here that maybe they don't need to go elsewhere, where our school loses money, the hot topic that we've been bringing up several times tonight. And I think if you go through, turn every stone, you can find those savings and have less impact on what's available for students and staff at all Herman Town schools.
So first, I want to just start off and say that I think our greatest asset at Herman Town is our teachers, our educators. So that's not just the teachers in the classrooms, but the pairs supporting them and all the other staff that's associated with the district. And I say that, but that's also our largest expense. And so it's really easy to say, let's find all the places we can cut, and I can tell you that- And I can tell you that we have slashed and trimmed and done so much to try to retain the educators we have in the building without having impacted students. But I just don't know if there's much left to do. So I think we have to start thinking about rightsizing our schools and making sure that we've got the appropriate number of educators per student. And I think that's part of a much larger conversation that I don't have time to talk about right now. But I do think we need to be very mindful of how we approach these cuts. PSEO certainly is a problem, but I also think that it's our role as a school board member to become advocates for public education. And I actually had the opportunity to go down and lobby on behalf of public education in St. Paul, and I think all of us up here should do the same.
Check one, two. Okay, we're good. You can't have an event without a tech. But Derek, you're doing awesome. Thank you. All right, we're at the halfway point, our question four. Serving as a school board member can be challenging. There's passionate people on all sides of issues, limited resources, state rules and regulations and requirements, and the constant need for accurate, understandable, and accessible communication. We've had several questions that we would categorize this evening as hot-button issues. Of all of the quote "hot-button issues" you will potentially encounter as a school board member, what concerns you the most and why? We'll begin with Russ Salji. Again, this is a 60-second question. Thirty seconds for the yellow card.
Thank you. You know, relationships gets to be the concerns me most and why. Our faculty and our teachers and the people that run our schools, they're the heartbeat. They're not only there, they're on the sidelines of our sports teams, their music, their art. These people go way beyond the classroom, and when budgets get tough, those decisions also get tough. No one likes to hear referendum. No one likes to hear position reduction, pruning recreation. All of these things take hits, but a balanced budget does speak on its own behalf as well. So what concerns me most is how are we going to delicately handle our treasure and still be able to make the goals budgetarily?
Okay, thank you very much. Same question to Eric Griffith.
I think the most important part of this is communication. I think it's communication from the community coming into the school board, and communication from within the schools, back to the school board, and then back out to the community. I think that is of absolute utmost importance. We can't be getting lost in the weeds right now when we do have real issues facing the district, real issues which are the deficit that we're going to be looking at over the next three years, real issues when we look at school size, for what are we going to do with our growing classroom sizes in the elementary school, real issues like what are we going to do with the kids that are going to PSEO? What are we going to offer? So yes, I think communication is the most important part, the listening, the communicating. But I don't want to get lost in the weeds of hot-button issues when we have some real issues that we need to be addressing as part of the school board at Herman Town. Thank you.
Same question, David Lockey.
Well, obviously, the budget and how are we going to handle that while maintaining everyone's hopes and dreams of programs and things is a hot button, right? And there's never going to be the one-size-fits-all answer. So to me, the way you handle that is transparency. I don't want, I don't want anyone in the community to think something's being hidden from them, someone has somebody's ear, somebody's working for something else other than the better good of the Herman Town School community. And so I think if we have transparency and the community in large knows we've overturned every stone, we've done everything we could, and these are the best decisions we can come up with as a community with input from everyone, everyone here tonight, come to the meetings. We want to hear you. I want to hear you. I want to hear what you have to say. I want to hear both sides of everything. If we have transparency, then hot-button issues don't become hot buttons anymore, they just become issues that we've worked together to solve as a community. Thanks.
Ashley McFarland.
So I do believe that the biggest issue that's facing our district right now is our facility limitations. And I see that actually at multiple levels, because not only do we need to have space to have appropriate class sizes, we also need to have smart spaces that are responsive to the way education should work in this, in this day and age. And that's the part that actually concerns me probably more than anything else. Yes, we were able to get some funding to hopefully bolster our CTE programs at the school, but guess what? We don't actually have appropriate classrooms to really help support those efforts. And then thinking down at the elementary, we've got class sizes too big. I've got a fourth grader, and all the fourth grade parents know, 28 kids is too much for a classroom. That's a problem. And so I think that we're going to have to lean in hard to our community to support and not only make sure that we have the right size of school, but the right space. And that's going to take funding.
Thank you. And last in this category, Jody McShane.
What concerns me the most, and one of the main reasons why I decided to run for school board, is the, I want to see better communication and transparency. We've all talked about lots of the issues that the district is facing. I think there needs to be an understanding for everyone, clear communication, transparency about some of the concerns that, you know, people have. David, I think you said a good one, you know, hot-button issues, if they're discussed, they don't become hot-button issues then because they're discussed clearly and transparently. I feel very similarly, that we just need to address and be real clear about what the issues are, what the opportunities are, what the options are, and then make the best possible decision going forward.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to question five, Mr. Benson.
Eric Griffith is going to be our leadoff hitter, World Series metaphor. School board is a four-year term. If you're elected by the voters of this school district, what is your vision for the district four years from now?
Yeah, again, as I mentioned before, I graduated from Herman Town. And the reason that my wife and I moved back to Herman Town was because of its legacy of good education and because of the community around us. In four years, I want to make sure that that legacy is still alive. I want to make sure that Herman Town is known for supporting its students, for launching our students successfully into the world. I want to make sure that our teachers are supported, that we aren't having to lose any teachers, that we aren't losing teachers to burnout. And finally, yeah, if we can balance the budget, that would be pretty stinking important, too. Thank you.
And thank you. David Lockey.
Well, if you elect me into the school board, I have a vision for four years from now. The old theory, leave things better than when you found them, right? And we're finding this. And overall, despite the budget issues we keep talking about, we're in a good spot. We have a really good education system in Herman Town. We have fantastic staff, and we have students who are talented in multiple ways. And the goal is to make that all better within four years and overcome the challenges we're having now. So as the next forums happen, we're not talking about these issues anymore. They've been put to rest, or at least we have a path that we've all agreed on as a community that's going to put them to rest and make hot-button issues disappear. And so my goal is, over the next four years, to be a part of the community like I am now, be out there listening to people and taking what I hear into school board meetings and working together within those doors and walls with whoever's there in the room with us to make this the best school district in the state. And that's not an impossible goal at all.
Thank you. Ashley McFarland.
So I, in four years, would like Herman Town to still be what many call a destination district. And I know that actually makes some people cringe, because we have probably too many children flocking into this district. But I say that because I still want people to want to be here. And that's not just children and families, but I also want teachers to be here. And there's been a lot of burnout over the last few years, and I do hope that the changes we've made in compensation recently does retain those teachers and also attracts the greatest that are out there. So finally, in terms of destination district, as I said already, I want the school, I want the kids to be here, I want the teachers to be here, but I also want the community to support us, and I mean businesses and philanthropy. I want people to want to come here and support us financially as well. And it's going to take that for us to do all of these various initiatives. I would love to see high schoolers wanting to come to Herman Town just because of our CTE programs. I will keep saying that over and over again, because it is my passion.
Thank you. Jody McShane.
My vision for the district four years from now is, you know, I'd like to see the facilities at the elementary school. I don't know if they need to be expanded or completely rebuilt, but I'd like to see, you know, more space there. I'd like to see the budget balanced. I want to see that we have retained and continue to attract quality teachers and staff. As the community grows, Herman Town's a great community. We need to make sure that the district grows accordingly with that. I know that there's been a lot of open enrollment, and we've been able to, you know, attract people, you know, through that. I know that that opportunity is dwindling because our community is growing. I think that's a great sign, but our district needs to grow in relation to the community as well.
Thank you. Russ Salji.
Yeah, I think in four years, when you're in the school boardroom, I think, you know, there's going to be a mix of solving some issues, creating some anxieties, and celebrating some successes. Now, I do believe each year that the budget will continue to be something that has to be looked at and made sure that it works. But I also envision, you know, the first pitch down at the New Fields on Uggstead in Maple Grove, the new ice rink. I mean, some of these things, we got, we have a nice horizon of celebratory things, but then I also believe as well, the educational space in our elementary schools are small. So we need, we need to start addressing that next. Thank you.
And thank you.
So we have efficient and succinct candidates this evening. We have a few moments for some additional, an additional question or questions. And we will also have opportunity for our candidates to share some closing remarks as well. So we had kind of a potpourri of questions regarding mental health, four-day school week, the trades versus the traditional four-year education, student opinions, and childcare. And I'm going to leave this up to our guest moderator, Jake Benson, to choose one of those.
Well, thank you, Kim. This one came from a student, so I think it's pretty relevant. And the question is, how does student opinions influence decision-making? And we will start with David Lockey.
I think it plays a big role. I mean, this is who, was why we're here, right? I mean, we're on the school board and our whole community, school district is for the students. Now, obviously, you know, if they ask for an extra free vending machine, things like that, that's, you know, can't be done. But I think their opinion does matter, especially in the programs, what they're seeing. I ask my kids all the time, "How was school today? What did this teacher say? Or what did you learn today?" And things like that, because they're going to be honest, sometimes bluntly honest, which is fantastic, because I think everything, you know, they're just a part of this community as we are, regardless if they're 14 years old, 17 years old, 10 years old, whatever the case may be. So I do think that they play a role in our decision-making in terms of, because they're the ones who are going through what we're implementing. And we have to hear how that is working out for them personally. It's important, it's crucial, in fact.
Thank you. Ashley McFarland.
I do believe that the student opinion really matters, keeping that kind of within some sidebars, right? Because even when I talk to my own two kids, if I tried to do everything that they wanted, we'd have a very different school here. But I do want to highlight that over the last several years, when we started noticing kind of a migration, especially out of our high school, I actually sat down with Dr. Munich, our high school principal, and addressed this and thought, you know, "Let's start asking the students, what kind of curriculum are they wanting? What things could we potentially attract them and to retain them here with?" And so I actually worked with him on that survey, got the survey out there, and then also went through and summarized and was able to bring that survey material back to our board and have some conversations about how we could start adding some new classes to try to retain those students. So that's just an example of how, you know, I not only believe that the decisions need to be informed by our students, but I've done that in action.
Thank you. Jody McShane.
I think that our kids' opinions, I think we should definitely take them into consideration. I don't think that we need to, you know, make every decision as a parent. I think we understand that, you know, make a decision based on their opinions all the time. But they are the ones that are living through the decisions that we make. And so we need to take into consideration their feelings, their, you know, make decisions, we're making decisions on their behalf. They have to live with, you know, some of the decisions that we make. So I want to make sure that their voices are being heard, that we can kind of promote that communication between, you know, the kids and the teachers and the staff and the parents up to the board, to make sure that we're taking their opinions into consideration, making sure that their voices are heard so they feel valued and like a trusted member of this community, because they are.
Thank you. Russ Salji.
Yeah, I think student opinion is kind of the wrong label here. I think a student opinion is, "I want prime rib for lunch." Well, think again, you're not going to get prime rib for lunch. I think student-led conversations on, we'll use the same example, can we have food trucks in the parking lot? Things like that. It's an ongoing conversation to get them out of what they really want to mean versus their opinion, because there are things in constructs that the student isn't going to understand that we can't do what they're asking. And in a lot of times in my work, when you're working with youth and students, that, they want to see instant gratification. If they give you their opinion and you don't do anything with them, you've lost the student. But if you can work with them on how to get change with them along the way, you'll find way better results.
Thank you. Eric Griffith.
Thanks. Yeah, I think student opinion is very important. Again, we're the adults in the, in the room, but yes, student opinion matters. That is one of the things we have to look at on why so many kids are choosing PSEO over staying in school. It's that student opinion that is driving them to do that. And I think back, geez, when I was in my senior year, would I rather do a hybrid model or would I rather go to school two days a week than be there five days a week? Potentially, that's pretty attractive. So we need to take their opinions into consideration. Now, when I was talking to a pair of kids from the neighbors, they wanted to have their cell phones all day through school. And I thought, well, okay, this is one of those places where maybe we shouldn't be listening to that community, or be listening to that student opinion, but it's important to talk with them and then communicate back why maybe that isn't the best decision. And in the end, I want all the kids to look back at their education and say, "Hey, I had a great education and a great experience at Herman Town Schools, and I would consider putting my kids in Herman Town Schools as well."
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the questions. We're at the time now where we're going to begin our closing remarks, and because we have just a few extra moments, we're going to give everyone up to 90 seconds. And the yellow card will flash at 60 seconds, so you'll have 30 seconds to complete your thought. You do not need to use all of your time, but just as a guidance for you. So closing remarks, we will begin in reverse order this time. We'll go Salji, McShane, McFarland, Lockey, Griffith, and then I'll get the microphone back. It would be great. Closing remarks are your free-form opportunity to address anything else you'd like, perhaps something that was not covered tonight. What differentiates you from any other candidates and/or board members? If there's a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the board? What is your vision for education in this community? Anything. You may also wish to share how people can get in touch with you and/or your campaign. So again, we'll go in reverse order. This is a 90-second opportunity with a yellow card at 60 seconds. And we will, we will begin with Russ Salji.
Thank you. You know, my journey towards wanting to become the school board candidate really came from the school. The school sent out some emails to parents about the possibility of three-seat changeover within a six-seat board dynamic. That could be a real culture shift. And I think after hearing from the candidates up here, I think you're all in great hands, or we're all in great hands, that we know that these three seats will be filled with three more leaders or a continuation of a leader. So I am very happy at the protection that we are given for our high standard of education. I do believe I have a role within that. I have many, many years' experience in the boardroom, as I stated earlier. I know how board dynamics work, a give-take here, give-take there, an agreement out the door, and we're all unison is the way things have to happen, even though in the room it could get very passionate. We could get stopped anywhere from the gas station to the supermarket to hear from our community and our constituents. We have to bring those things back. But at the end of the day, we got to be happy with the product we have, protecting our stu- students, our families, and our community. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jody McShane.
I felt the urge to run for school board. I was lucky with the community. I've been fighting breast cancer for the last year and a half. I finished my last treatment in July, and the community just kind of scooped me up and like embraced me while I was going through treatment, and now hopefully I'm cancer-free. And I felt like this was a good opportunity for me to kind of return the favor a little bit. I feel, you know, my husband and I have coached our sons and our daughter's softball teams throughout the years, so I've been involved in different things there, did the different extracurricular activities that they do, but I felt that this is something that, you know, I could do. My extended family's been involved in different things throughout the community, but I wanted to do this. I love being in the Herman Town community. I really feel that the district is fantastic, and want to make sure that it continues to remain that way for ourselves, for our kids, for future generations. I really love it here, and I feel like this is an opportunity for me to help, you know, maintain and keep that greatness in Herman Town.
Thank you. Ashley McFarland.
Yeah, I first just want to say thank you to the community for entrusting me on your board for the last four years, and I've gotten to meet a lot of people. It was interesting because when I moved into the district, it was just two years prior to getting elected, so I was pretty much, nobody knew who I was. But then, getting on the board, you quickly find out who people are, and you get to meet a lot of wonderful people. And so, it's been a great experience getting really brought into the community, and it's been a great place to raise our family. I just want, if you haven't had the experience to work with me over the last four years, I would just want you all to know how hard I work on the school board. You actually have to make a lot of sacrifices on the school board. For example, my daughter's swimming right now, and I'm not there. There's been many nights where I've been at school board meetings till seven or eight o'clock at night and still gotten in the car and driven five, six hours to get to a work function for the next day. It's hard, but it's very rewarding work. And I just want you to know that every time I come to the school board meeting, I've done my research, I've asked the hard questions, I've talked to people in the community, and I've also connected with a lot of our educators and administrators to make sure, again, that the school that we're supporting through the board is a reflection of our wonderful community. So, I've worked hard, and if you ever have any questions about the work that has been done over the last four years or what I'm hoping to do in the next four, please reach out to me because I do want to make sure that we are serving you.
Thank you. David Lockey.
I chose to run, I think I came to the realization my whole life, I've been always wanting to serve and to lead and be a part of something from coaching to working with Duluth Parks in Iraq and then getting into radio. The best memories I have of my career and to this day are the times I've worked with nonprofit organizations, hosting events, working for St. Jude Children's Research Hospital to raise funds for them. So, I've always, I guess, felt the desire to please people and to try to come up with solutions and help people overcome obstacles. And a school board member is that on steroids, really, right? It's a bigger stage, there's issues, you're a community you serve, and I welcome that challenge, and I welcome the community to reach out to me because I do, I've said it before, and it's true, I want to hear from everybody on both sides because you can't make the best decisions until you hear from everybody, and I'm willing to do that. Being a Scorpio, passion is not a problem for me, but neither is listening and hearing and being able to take all the opinions that I hear and come up with a resolution, a solution that makes everyone realize this is indeed the best path forward, and I will work hard at all times for that. And anyone with questions, reach out to me at any time. The easiest way to say it out loud is just my name, David Lockey, 700 for the school district, davidlocke700@gmail. Again, that's davidlocke700@gmail. And I encourage everyone to read our things on Duluth News Tribune. I have a profile on legal women voters and more.
Thank you, David. And Eric Griffith.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, for sure. Yeah, my decision to run for school board, I've been thinking about this for quite a few years now, and really what happened is, over the past year, I have been working diligently with a group of advanced practice providers at my place of employment, and we managed something quite incredible there. And as that is now winding down a little bit, I'm looking at my son's basketball team and was thinking about coaching again, but I also understand that I think they've graduated. I think they're ready for a coach who knows a little bit more about basketball. As I saw, there were three positions open on the school board, I thought, well, maybe now's the time. I'm going to have a little bandwidth, I'm going to have a little time, a lot of time. Maybe it's time to step up and step up to the plate here. I've got two primary focuses here. One, our students, all our students. I want to make sure they have the resources that they need to succeed. I want to make sure that on MCAs, they continue to blow the rest of the students in the state of Minnesota out of the water. Next, the teachers, right? We have got some awesome teachers at Herman Town, and there are going to be some tough times ahead, but I want to make sure that we aren't losing teachers to burnout. I want to listen to our teachers, talk with our teachers, talk with everyone in our school district, talk with the community, and let's come up with some great resolutions for some issues that are facing Herman Town Schools. Thank you again for coming tonight, you guys.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Well, Jake, that's kind of a wrap on things tonight. What did you think? Well, we'll do our post-analysis later, and you can find it in the Herman Town Star.
Yes. I just wanted to say that I have been at the table, I have been a candidate, I've been in the audience, I have been a moderator for decades, and you have a great group of candidates. Difficult choice. I want to thank you for your answers and your thought and your commitment. I also want to thank Kim for putting on a wonderful forum and for her work as a school board member herself. And I want to thank you and the audience. Government works best when we all participate. So, thank you for being here this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you to our audience that showed up tonight. There's a programming note, the forum has been recorded, and the Herman Town Area Chamber of Commerce will share that when that is made available to us. I believe that will also be available through the school district as well. So, thank you, Derek, in the control room. Our superintendent, Wayne Whipwam, is in the audience. Wayne, thank you so much. And let's see, I'd like to thank our marketing communications director, Olivia Sedlachek, from the chamber, for helping me put this together this evening, and also the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors for helping us shape programming like this in the community. And to our Toastmasters, Club 1523, Wolfgar, let's give it up for Wolfgar, timing not easy, and I remembered to pause just enough so he could reset his clock for that. And again, there's Toastmasters that meets actually at the Herman Town Area Chamber of Commerce, the first and third Thursdays of each month, and there's information on the back table about that. You have a difficult choice ahead of you. I appreciate you all for practicing civility this evening. That is very important to be able to conduct a program like this. And, yeah, you're going to have a tough choice. So, we appreciate you all. Once again, our candidates, if you'd please rise when I call your name and stay standing. Thank you so much. We'll begin with Russ Salji. Jody McShane. Ashley McFarland. David Lockey. And Eric Griffith. This is a four-year term, and there are three seats available. After this, the next election cycle will be in two years. All right, any other further comments?
Nope, just thank you all.
Drive safe, and thank you for attending.